Called meeting to order, roll call please.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Mininger.
Here.
Shaver. McCarthy.
Here.
Ask you to stand for the pledge, please. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Opened Meeting Act is available for your review on the back wall underneath the clock. Is there any changes in the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. I would like to move seven D David to nine A and move nine A to nine B. Make a motion to do that. Looking for a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mininger.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Okay, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines the matter requires emergency action. Is there anybody tonight that may have something under emergency action? Seeing none, we'd like to welcome you to the Scottsburg City Council meeting. If you have anything to address at council tonight, we ask that you come forward. We'll give you some time to sign your name onto the register here. We ask you that you state your name, who you are representing. Please speak into the microphone that's recorded and played back on allocommunication. In the case of an emergency tonight, there's the exit door, the one to which you came in. Also, if you go down the hallway to the left or the right, we'll get you an exit. In the case of a tornado tonight, the fallout shelter will be down the hallway towards the bathroom area. Don't laugh, it's Nebraska. All right. Six A, council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary of the items on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. So, for the public, that means that the city council can take any agenda item at any time if it meets a criteria and go into executive session on that. Item number seven, consent calendar.
Move approval of seven A through C.
Second. Call the roll.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mininger.
Yes.
Shaver.
No.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eight A, regular claims.
Approval.
Second. Call the roll.
Mininger.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Ninety-eight, approve the request for proposable engineering services for siding, development, permitting, and designation of a new landfill facilities for the city of Scottsburg and Gearing, Nebraska. Bids are received by the city of Gearing prior to one o'clock PM, January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. Nathan.
Yes, your honor, as we do with all RFPs, we bring those forward to city council for approval. This is unique in a sense that it's a partnership with the city of Gearing for the siding, development, permitting, and design of a new landfill facility. Bids are to be received by one PM, which is Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. Staff is recommending approval of approving the proposals.
Okay, for the public's information, this is just a request to have engineers send a proposal to us that we can look at. It doesn't mean that a project moves forward or stops, but it's just to be able to bring that information forward to the council. We did move it after off a consent, so that means that it is open for public comment at this time if anybody would like to speak on the proposal itself. Welcome.
Thank you Mayor Mininger for changing the agenda to give us a chance to address the council. Thank you council members for listening. I don't want to drag it out, there's a lot of details. Again, we've been part, I guess should introduce myself. I'm Bobby Alba. I live at nine oh five six eight County Road eleven, and I guess I have been a stakeholder is what we've been deemed, which is basically another term for the property owners and concerned citizens around the Bald Peak land area. So, I don't want to drag a lot out, there's a lot of details we've already gone over about the project, there are a ton of details that'll still be coming forward. I am in the land development business, so I do understand what RFPs and RFQs are all about. The one thing I did think was a little bit important to get out to the citizens of Scotts Bluff and Gearing, a lot of it is timing. We're a long way away from garbage piling up in the streets of city of Gearing and Scotts Bluff. Gearing just applied for renewal of their operations permit December third of last year, and according to their own executive summary, they have just short of two million cubic yards of capacity still left. So, there's one million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand cubic yards of solid waste volume left in their final cells, which again, according to their own statement, takes them to September of two thousand and twenty-six. So, we got a lot of time to do this, a lot of time to look at the engineering and due diligence for it, and a lot of time to make sure that if it goes forward, it goes forward using the best science and the best technology that we have to date. So, you know, one extension of that, I guess, is the need for, I guess, and the immediacy again, there are two private-owned solid waste companies that currently have an interest in this project as well. I don't want to get into the pros and cons of needing it at all, but I just wanted to let the public know that. There are two privately-owned companies, one of which has already reached out to the city of Gearing by formal letter saying they would like to have a meeting to discuss not only properties and design, but also engage in a long-term contractual obligation to removing the solid waste from the Twin Cities. So, that option is also available, and I think economically that just makes sense that we look into all options. You're looking at a, from the engineers I've talked to, you're looking at a three to four million dollar proposition by the time you buy your land, get all of your due diligence done, all of your hydrogeology testing done, by the time you're ready with sell one open and you're ready to start depositing solid waste, you're going to be in a neighborhood of three to four million dollars. So, depending on what the profit structure of that is, what the partnership agreement is, you know, you're looking, if you were making a hundred percent profit based on the numbers that were in the city's renewal, by the time you would get your three million dollar investment back, if you were at a hundred percent profit, you would have seventy-eight months worth of solid waste going out there before you would just recuperate your upfront costs. No interest, no labor, no unforeseen costs actually, your cost of doing business isn't in there. So, if you're making thirty-five percent profit, you're going to be eighteen years before you've actually got your money back. And because of that, I think it's well worth listening to these other ISTs that already have hundred-year-plus solid waste facilities available to be used by the Twin Cities. They'll look at it any way you want. The collections could still happen in the city, and then they could go to the bailing facility, be picked up there, they could be sorted and then re-shipped by the other trucks. You know, there are just two or three other options that are available, and again, with the timing, we have time to look at that, and we have time to weigh that out as well. I won't get into the details of the site. I guess the main thing with the RFP that kind of caught me off guard was even if you overnight your RFP's out tomorrow, you're asking for, and I guess an important point, this will be the first new solid waste landfill approved by the state of Nebraska DEQ under their new guidelines, and you're asking for the engineers to come forward. If you use overnight mail tomorrow, they would have nineteen days to respond to your RFP. And I really don't know that that gives everybody enough time to reach out for the newest and best, and I'm afraid that what we'll get is just the same old, same old. The people that have done it this way in Nebraska will have a package ready, they're going to be able to respond in nineteen days. The guys that are out there that are totally unfamiliar with this area, the geotechnical formations that we have out here, I just don't know if you do get one, you're probably going to get a CYA type of deal. It's not going to be as economically pinpoint as it could be. I don't think you're going to get your best point on a, your best price point on a nineteen-day RFP. So, I guess, you know, in summary, I know that we have what has been declared a willing seller with a piece of property that wants to be entertained. I know that we're going forward probably more on his schedule than ours because he probably has, you know, some certain expectation of when he can count on a check, and I don't know if there's criteria about that involved in the letter of commitment for that property or not, but I just want to make sure, as I encourage the Gearing City Council, that we spend the time to do the best science and get the best project that we can, and that also we pursue all the economic options that are available to the citizens of Scotts Bluff and Gearing before we jump out and spend four million dollars, three million, four million dollars. Thank you.
Thanks Bobby. Nathan, in regards to the nineteen days, is that appropriate, or if we don't get response, should we turn those back and extend those? What's the process?
If we do not receive sufficient response, I think we would have to go out and rebid the proposals. The RFP was put together by the city of Gearing, so we're using their time schedule. Our time schedule is a little bit different than theirs, which is probably why it's limited to nineteen days. But if we don't have sufficient bids, or if we open the bids and we don't feel that those really solve what we're looking for, we can always re-advertise for the RFP.
Mark, we've done that on some road projects, do you have one?
We have, we've done a number of times with the RFPs, and as we go through those and we're not satisfied with those qualifications, we'll redo it again, we'll bring it back to you, and we'll go out again for another, however long it takes.
Now, with our process, just reiterate to the public, we go through a two-process. We look at qualifications and whether they can have the qualifications to look and do a project.
Right.
And then we look at bids and proposals, two separate things, correct?
That's right. Yeah, and that first one, we're just one qualification. We want to know if you've, no different than this one, have you done a landfill? If you have, where? And how many have you cited? Because they are extensive. We're probably eight to ten years from ever seeing a landfill. That's how long it takes to actually get a landfill cited. So, these folks are going to have to have some extensive knowledge of exactly what they just talked about, groundwaters, you know, all those factors come into play when you're doing a landfill. So, if these don't meet, as the city manager had just said, I think that's very appropriate to just, you know, we would like to take a broader look at others that, and I'm sure we're going to get some from out of state, but they all need to have a fair shot and have cited landfills in the past. That's going to be important in the criteria.
As Mr. Alba stated, you know, we want to spend time to do it right before we spend three, four million dollars, and I appreciate his input that he's brought to the, what do we call that, the steering committee, I guess?
Stakeholders.
Stakeholder. And he's absolutely right. We want to do this right, and we only have one shot to do this, and we want to make sure that we're doing it right, not only for the cities plural, but also for potential surrounding neighbors. So, we want to make sure we do it right.
Is there anyone from?
Sorry. Let him speak in then.
I was just wondering, is there anyone from the city of Scotts Bluff going to review the RFPs with the city of Gearing?
Yes.
Who?
We'll have staff, public work staff, I'll review it as well.
Okay.
We'll have a team that reviews those.
So, is that part of our business agreement with them on the landfill? Have we moved forward with that?
We're still working on a landfill operating agreement between the city of Scotts Bluff and the city of Gearing. We've turned over our rough draft to them, and we'll be working with them here in the very near future to see where that's at.
I should have asked if there were any questions before I sat down, so I apologize. One other point that will be critical in what was just mentioned is there's a little bit of discrepancy on this landfill itself between just being a municipal landfill and being a regional landfill, and that also plays into the economics. There's talk of opening this up as a regional landfill to help create and enhance volume in order to make the budget of this thing work, you know, and I'm talking eighteen-year payback, that's not an investment that many banks would finance, and I don't think the taxpayers want to finance that either. But yet, you know, as a citizen of this area and having been to a state Nebraska DEQ meeting where their goal is zero waste, it's a bit of a gray or iffy area to think that we're also contemplating importing solid waste from other states and bringing it into the community in an effort to help mediate some of these costs that you're going to incur. And that's, you know, that's another issue down the road that I think all of the citizens of Scotts Bluff County, not only Scotts Bluff and Gearing, but the county, need to be aware of. And Mayor Kaufman, the very first time I spoke to the Gearing council, informed me that they had already had inquiries from as far away as Douglas, Wyoming. And I know that Cheyenne, Wyoming, because their old solid waste management facility turned into a, just kind of a horrible environmental deal, they are currently bailing all of their solid waste and it's headed to Alt, Colorado. So, because they did not want the liability of opening up another solid waste landfill in and around the Cheyenne area, and they have a lot of water issues there too. So, that kind of goes into what you were saying, sir, that, you know, there's a lot of input for this, and, you know, that regional versus municipal issue is yet to be crossed, and I see that the RFP is for a municipal landfill, so, sorry.
No, 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 that's all.
Other questions?
No, we want to be very transparent with this, and that's why we pulled it off.
Again, I do appreciate that, so, thank you.
Now, it's possible that the engineer coming in, they were awarded it, they could go out to the site and after doing some due diligence, say this is not an appropriate site. I mean, that is, that is a possibility. But I want to go back to what you said Bobby, that let the science that we have now, the best science that we have now, lead us forward, and that's what we're asking for, so that we can do that. Anybody else? Looking for a motion to approve or deny the RFP. Make a motion to approve it. Looking for a second? Call the roll.
Chief.
No.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
No.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mininger.
Yes. Okay, now, just to make sure that the public is aware, alls we did was approved for the RFP to go out and for requests for proposals to come back in. That doesn't mean that a firm's been picked, nor has a firm been picked for a specific location or site. We do have a willing seller, that's been out to the public. Where on the land, we don't know. We don't have any significant ideas. That's why we're hoping that the engineer would come back after a period of time and let us know any information. All right, nine B, council to receive presentation by League of Nebraska Municipalities President Wendell Gaston. Welcome.
Need me to sign in too?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. That's.
We know you.
Yeah.
The public does not know you.
Well, I want to thank Nathan, and I think I called Cindy's office to get put on the agenda because I'm finding that works a little better. Through an unusual group of circumstances, I became league president this year, and I feel like there's about two or three attorneys I've been following around to some of the different meetings. I have a really active board, but it's going to be very difficult for me in Sidney, Nebraska to get down to the unicameral in two hours like the request. So, we kind of split up the work a little bit so that some of the people closer can go visit when they need to really quickly, and as a result of that, I'm going out to visit councils. I have at least, at least to see the city manager and the city clerk and some of the communities because I found out that my meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, and so are a whole bunch of other communities in the area, so, that's, I'm not going to get to some of those. But I have scheduled a hundred and two so far. So, this is part of my job is this year is to go around and hope, you know, advertise a little bit about what the league is doing. I think a lot of you have been probably to a meeting or so, so you know what we do. We're trying to change a little bit of the utility side of the training. I found out most of our training goes out in VHSs, so we're going to try to update that to online and some CD-type things and try to make it a little bit easier for people to access that, because especially from out here, it's really hard for everybody to get all the way back to all the training that is required anymore. But, and we're looking at trying to expand that a little bit. So, basically, I'm just here as a courtesy call, hope that the league is doing the job that you expected to do, and fulfilling my responsibility of going out. I will probably visit all but a couple in the panhandle councils that fall on Tuesday nights, those are going to be an issue, but any questions of me or the league?
We really appreciate the board approving Lynn to come out and do the mini-conference out here.
We're pretty happy with the success, and I think the success was all built on the fact that some of the individuals that put that together out here worked very hard at putting a program together that people really wanted to attend, and so you ought to be commended for taking that initiative. We're glad to provide that boring information. I mean, but it's all part of what we do every day. Now, the other requirement that I have when we do this is we now have a website and we do have a Facebook page, and so I'm going around and having my pictures taken with council put on those Facebook pages. So, I know Star back here, I'll convince her to take a picture, so if at least the council can kind of get together, then I'll be out of your hair, and thank you for putting me on the agenda, Nathan, and my job this year is to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of the council in Nebraska. We've got some pretty major issues that have suddenly arise, have arisen, I guess, from a lot of different angles and new bills that are coming, well, I guess not new bills, but new ideas on TIF and restrictions of TIF that I believe really going to hinder western Nebraska a lot. So, we're working on a lot of issues like that. With that, any questions of me? I've been on the council sixteen years, next year will be seventeen years, it'll be my last year. So, it's kind of odd because my father was on the council in Potter, Nebraska for seventeen years, and when I ran, I said, there's one thing I will not do, and that is be on the council for seventeen years, and now it's going to be, it's going to be within one week of how long he served. So, it's, I learned, don't say what you're not going to do because something else might happen. So, with that, argument.
Do a quick picture for Wendell. Start, do you want us up front or back here?
Do it right up there.
Okay, that's fine.
Get up.
You got any more? I'm going to see if you have.
Yeah, I will actually. If it's on a Tuesday, I hope.
You got a little more? Yeah. Thanks for the council's patience. Couple of days, I should be on with. Thank you, Ken.
Please tell your board that we appreciate what they're doing, and they've worked with us on many, many issues over the years.
Well, I hope, I hope that the meetings we have are productive for the people that go down to them. I mean, it's more and more and more important every year of the things that are recurring that we need to be to the forefront of that, like issues with landfill. I've been on long enough to know we went through the same kind of issues and we've come out there very, very well, but it is a long, difficult process, and it's important to know everything about it that you possibly can for those decisions. So, I hope we can educate people as best we can, so thank you for letting me be on the agenda, so appreciate it.
Next one. Ten A, council to consider awarding the bid for a community outdoor warning siren to Action Communications, amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Nathan.
Yes, your honor, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tim Newman, our emergency management director.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. Good evening, your honor and council. I would like to begin by saying that only one vendor met all of our bid specifications that we put out. That bidder was Action Communications of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I want to bring up four major items that the other two bidders could not meet, and the reason for going with the high bid. The first and most important to me was the weight at the top of the pole. Our bid specs required that the weight of the equipment at the top of the pole be four hundred pounds or less. Action's bid came in at three hundred and seventy-one pounds. American Signal had a weight of six hundred and forty pounds, and Federal Signal had a weight of five hundred and eighty pounds. To me, this is a safety issue, especially with the high winds that we get in this area, and the locations where we're putting these, Overland Park and at our city shops on Third. I would hate to see one of these blow off the top of the pole with that much weight and hurt someone. Secondly, our specs called for the siren to be made of composite material. We required this due to being virtually maintenance-free, and will hold up better in our wind, sun, hail, and heat that we have. And in fact, we included a clause that anything other than a corrosion-resistant composite material would not be accepted as an industry standard equivalent. Action's product is made from a composite material. American Signal is made of fiberglass, which UV rays can break down in direct sunlight after a period of time, and Federal Signal uses a powder-coated metal, which could require recoating, repainting, and if it's scratched or damaged, either in installation or maybe by hail, we could start having corrosion. So, that was our second issue. Third, the bid specs required that the cabinetry on the pole be made of a natural finish aluminum that would not require maintenance painting, and in fact, we included a clause that we would not accept anything that had to be painted as an industry standard equivalent. Action Communications provides a natural finish aluminum that will not need painting. American Signal has a painted aluminum cabinet, and Federal Signal provides a powder-coated metal cabinet. The fourth was the number of speakers and the power output. The specs that we put out required a five-speaker stack with a two-thousand-watt output. The Wieland WPS twenty-nine oh five offered by Action Communications is a five-speaker stack with two-thousand-watt output. The offering by American Signal, the I-Force twenty-four hundred, is a twenty-four-hundred-watt system but only has three speakers, and I would wonder why it takes twenty-four-hundred watts to drive three speakers. And the Federal Signal, MOD eighty-three-two B, is a thirty-two-hundred-watt output but has eight speakers, and my question on that would be, why does it take eight speakers and twelve-hundred extra watts to get the same sound output that Wieland is offering? The Wieland and the Federal offerings both have seventy-decibel range at forty-two-hundred feet and are within one decibel of each other at a hundred feet, but still, we have to have eight speakers versus five to make that happen. Those are my four major items. Couple of other items that we had was maintenance downtime. The Federal, Federal Signal advises in their bid that they would have a tech call us within twenty-four hours and could have a person here within three days. That's unacceptable to me with a tornado siren. And American Signal does have a tech in Hastings. Action's tech is here in the Scotts Bluff, Gearing area. Vendor assistance during installation. Action and American Signal would have a technician on scene during installation, but Federal advised they would only have limited involvement of the installation. That's due to the clause that we put in that MPPD would be the one that raises the siren stack and actually installs it on the top of the pole. And then batteries. The Federal- Federal, Federal Signal required four.